Public hearing, today is January 11th, 2016, 5:22. This is a public hearing for the proposed conditional use permit for medical offices at Alexandria Way. Is there any, anyone here to speak? And this is not necessarily from the medical offices, like, any public would like to speak on the issue. We're gonna get to that in the regular meeting, having you present. Is there anybody else?
I just wondered where it was, Kevin, that's all.
Do you wanna let them know where, I mean, it's next to Goddard?
Yes, between Goddard and TSC.
I guess, yeah, we could probably close this, I mean, we're supposed to be 5:15, it's already seven minutes after that, so, I guess we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Alright, motion second, we'll close this meeting, 5:23, minute meeting, and we'll be starting up again in a few minutes directly.
Yeah, I've got 5:23, I'm ready to start my session.
Therefore, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and then help facilitate picking a chair and a vice chair, and thereafter, I'm gonna step back into the audience, but for this purpose only, I'm going to help him facilitate that. So at this time, because this is a new planning commission board, I'm gonna ask that the clerk, please call the roll, and I see that Janelle's coming, so...
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Posar?
Here.
Mr. Chivone?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I, again, restating what I said initially, is that because this is a new planning commission, I'm gonna help facilitate the first part of this, which is the appointment of a chair, so I'm gonna take any nominations from among the four of you to pick a person and nominate him as the chair, and then we'll have a vice chair nomination, and then a zoning board of appeals nomination.
Make a motion to nominate Kevin Westbrook?
Sure. I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Kevin Westbrook, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, and Kevin, you are now the chair. The second would be then a vice chair, do we have any nominations for a vice chair?
I have Mr. Posar.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for Frank Posar to be the vice chair of the planning commission, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, the motions carry. Who would like then to be nominated for the appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals? That was again, a charter change to appoint one of the board, uh, planning commission members, who will not have a vote, by the way, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but is only going to be there to carry information from planning to VCA.
I'll second that, as long as he's willing.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion, a second, to appoint Frank to the, as the liaison between the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, and all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, the motions carry, my job is done, I thank you very much for all being willing to serve on the Pasadena Planning Commission, and I'm going to step off and let you go to your own people.
Mayor, we have two new members, they've been kind of all new critics, Mr. Cox, Mr. Chivone, let's, but we'll jump right into the, right into the meeting, we had at 5:22, we had the public hearing for the first item on the agenda, and so we'll start with that, the proposed conditional use permit for medical offices at Alexandria Way. If you'd wanna, you can have a seat here. Relatively informal, back and forth, usually, now, it gets covered, kind of one of ours. It's usually we'll start with, kind of, maybe, if you have one, just explain, explain in general the project, what's going on in the middle.
Okay, well, what we're looking at is the lot between Goddard and the TSC, on the back side of Alexandria, or, I guess, developing that lot, there's roughly, I think, 1.4 acres, with a 6,000 square foot facility, multi-tenant, one of those, the medical office, Dr. Dwyer, is slash developer of that site, and there's the other two units, we should, in the future, for the future.
The other two, which are the other two?
Uh, we are actually right here.
Yeah.
This is 6,000 square feet attached, this would be the doctor's office, no way to have future tenants, I get you.
So, I guess, okay, so, to overview, Brian, you wanna go through your comments as our city mayor?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you, would you like me to read my memo in its entirety, or just summarize?
You can summarize.
Alright, thank you.
Do you have any copies, please?
The, the planning zoning code requires a conditional zoning certificate, we talked about, as well as site plan review for this, um, this new facility, so I broke my, my report up into two sections, and really, the, the information regarding the conditional zoning certificate is fairly limited, you know, it is conditionally permitted in the code, you know, from the standpoint of the use, and how it fits in with this particular development, I, I think it's certainly appropriate, so really, the only issue that, that I raised in my report relates to the sixth criteria, if you will, for conditional zoning certificate under section 1137.04B. I felt all those requirements were, or standards were satisfied, but the only one I suggested the commission look at was item number two, as it relates to the, the architecture, because this particular property's in a town center district, the requirements found in section 117203 apply, which is for town center district architectural standards, and again, I, I point out, I think the building substantially complies with the requirements, with the exception of the EFS paneling being proposed, 117203B2C specifically denotes this type of facade treatment as inappropriate unless, unless used on design features, so I just felt the, the applicant should work with the, the city architect and the mayor's office to ensure compliance with the town center architectural standards. Regarding the, the site plan requirements, you know, the, the plan is, is certainly good for illustrating what the intent is, the more, sort of, the devil's in the details, the meat and potatoes, if you will, will come at a later stage, so this is good for a conceptual, a conceptual standpoint, but the one issue that I take note with on, to point out to the commission, relates to the off-street parking, the applicant shows in their summary under the zoning, for medical offices and small retail stores, one parking space required for every 200 square feet of floor area, and, and that is true, but the code does have greater standards for off-street parking for other uses, and the one in particular that, that I was, I'm a little concerned with relates to restaurant uses, they're calculated at a, a higher standard of one off-street parking space for every 50 square feet of floor area, now, if you use that standard, it's gonna yield a, a much higher amount of parking required for, for this site, so, I don't know what the applicant's intent is, if they, if they think they're gonna maybe draw an eating establishment, then, we'd wanna really take a look at that parking standard, and how that plays out with the space, fairly limited space on, on the lot, if you don't, I suppose, if you don't think that that's even something you're gonna target, then, I might just comment here that the applicants could sort of self-police that by stipulating that restaurant uses wouldn't, wouldn't be something that would be allowable in this particular building, and that would forego any concerns about the off-street parking standard, so that, that was just an issue I thought the commission should be aware of, the other one, the building appears to be built right up to about that 100-foot front yard setback line, just, there's, there's some room on the site to shift it, just thought maybe you could take that into consideration, just with over dig, if this, you know, you could generate that building facade right into that setback pretty easily, so just thought you could shift it a little bit, but that's something to take into consideration, sort of a minor issue, but just something to think about. The drive aisles are on the plan, they're, they're sort of random, 25 feet in the front for a drive aisle, 30 feet to the rear of the building for the drive aisle in between the parking spaces, and then it's upwards of, you know, 36 feet, 'cause the building takes a little jog toward the back, along the side, I just felt that some consideration could be given to keeping some consistency on those drive aisles, and that, that would generate a larger tree lawn for maybe some more landscaping, or landscape treatment on the front and even on the rear of the property.
The only thing I was thinking there, kind of, the, the differences is for truck turning around the back, get to the dumpster, you know, fire, fire trucks, you know, get them bigger, like, go around the backside, giving them enough room to, to make those turns, so...
And that, and that, again, that's just a, a suggestion, I mean, it's a minimum standard in, in the code, and, and you've met that, it was just a suggestion to, you know, for the commission to consider, I'd just point out the identification signage more for the applicant's sake of how much identification signage you get, and how you could break it down by the units, and that, that could be, the applicant could choose to have more for his space, and less for the others, it's something could work with the, the planning commission and the mayor's office to determine that, a lot of times, the city will enter into, like, a sign, a particular sign standard, or sign criteria for a, a complex, so that's something you could take as an option, and, and look at that, and then just the last items I noted in my review are, again, fairly general, because the plan is conceptual at this time, a lighting plan, landscaping details will all be required at, you know, at a later time, drainage counts, those sort of the, the technical requirements will be due at a later time, and then, again, the, the building architecture complying with chapter 1272 of the code, so, this time, from a recommendation standpoint, I, I feel that the use is definitely very appropriate, reasonable to approve the conditional zoning certificate if the commission desired, the site plan itself is comprehensive enough for a conceptual approval, but the, to flesh out some of these other details before you do a final approval, and I can answer any questions the commission has.
Yeah, I have one question, yep. On your architectural sheet A1, or A elevation, A2, I think, is it?
I'm not so sure, on the south elevation, the area, the roof area between the two larger, two outside areas, what is it, is this a sloping roof or something, or what?
Yeah, that would continue to slope back, that, that would be like a half truss, sloping back towards the road, creating a, a triangle shape on the back roof that's low pitch, parapits.
Okay, then that roof is higher than the other two adjacent roofs?
No.
See, because, this is the roof one you have.
Yeah, this, this is a parapit, here, would actually come up like this, okay, and then this roof slopes back down like that, there's actually a step there, okay?
Okay, this is shown much higher than that, though. You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I do that, this is actually coming, like this, in between these two.
Right, right.
Okay, so it's create a triangle there.
Right.
To act as a parapit to hide any rooftop units from the front, face of the building.
Okay, so you're gonna have exposed roof here.
Shingle building.
And just a vertical face in the back?
In the back, and that steps down, back down to like a flat roof, or, a flat roof, but it's a quarter, quarter twelve pitch, that way it's acting as a parapit, to hide any rooftop units, that would be, like A, C, yeah.
You wouldn't want to put any architectural treatment in the front there, or anything, it's a little different, I mean, to me, that's a, a lot of roof area, you know, going back like that, I don't, I don't know, I mean, that's, you know, it looks like, it's gonna look something like this, 'cause that's...
Correct, yeah, it's gonna look like the two sides, the two side, the two sides that are sticking up are, is the architectural feature, okay, and then that middle...
Does our architect have any problem with that, or anything?
He's not here, but he did have some comments. Do you mind?
South front elevation should be all brick, have the same color rather than a two-tone shown, and the brick should be on the whole elevation up to a freeze below the roof, to avoid the large area EFS, the transfrom windows on the front, and the high windows on the west, left side, should have mutant bars to keep the town center's standards. Masonry pilasters would have brick up the west elevation and placed between the high windows with a similar pattern introduced on the east elevation, the seat in west elevation should also have brick the full height, except for a cornice band at the top of the parapet walls.
We can incorporate that, I mean, like, it was the conceptual drawing, you know, I, I kinda based off, there, there is other buildings with EFS work out there, so that's why I was just incorporating the brick, EFS, shingles, you know, rather than metal roofs, that's kind of the, the thing back there.
Well, there's gonna be shingle roof, is it not, or?
Correct.
Okay, the whole thing, all that.
Except for that flat, flat roof portion.
Right, right. I was just gonna say, I mean, the aesthetics are a little bit questionable, that's, that's all I'm getting at, and I think, maybe, you wanna take a look at that, or, I mean, you know, a roof going back, that's, these I could see because it's, it's a little bit different, you have a slope to this, but this is a very flat slope going all the way back.
It'll be the same slope as EFS.
Can I throw a comment, Mr. Chairman? Given that this is a buddy up against a residential area as well, is, is that I got concerned from the backside, that the parapet walls come up to the backside, so that we're not looking at rooftop units from the back as well, instead of having it open, I think that the parapet walls should come up high, hide all of the units to the backside, so I think that Mr. Chivone's comments about the aesthetics are, and the, and that, I didn't have ob, obviously, an opportunity to have them come in and talk with me before they presented this plan, otherwise, I probably would have been touching upon a lot of these issues already with, with them, they wanted to get to the public hearing part of this, I'd still like to have an opportunity, if they would like to come in and sit down with me and go over some design issues, I think that that would be most appropriate, along with some of the other issues with the traffic lights and stuff like that, that's of a concern, that this is one of the last parcels of that subdivision. Good.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't think you can have the same slope, because this would have to come back over here, so you don't have to have that same slope, if you're bringing that from here all the way out, you'd have half that slope, would you not, all the way back? If you're, if you're coming back there, here...
This one should, you can actually see the, the hill line, okay? This, this is that center section, so it's kind of...
That's what I was looking for, okay, that's not clear, okay.
Okay, and then, there's the...
Okay, okay, that's not, sorry, okay, so it's really not a, you're, you're really not gonna have a vertical parapet here of any type, you're just gonna, you're just gonna bring this back on down to the roof?
It could be, it could be either way, I mean, it could be stepped down, just carried up flat, and then all the rooftop units, so it is hit screened by the two taller portions.
Okay, sorry.
Back here, and we could do screening towards the residential side, it looks like the wall screen kind of drops off here, probably some kind of, something, something back there, you know, it's, I'm not sure, is that... That's the rear elevation.
Yeah, that's, I think, that's the side of the faces.
Yeah, I guess what I, I understand where the mayor's coming from, but I'm, on the engineering, architectural side, I really wouldn't wanna build parapits on all four sides and create a swimming pool up there.
Right.
There's different scenarios there, roof load, snow load, conditions, and all that, but, open to doing screening of rooftop units or whatever, like I said, if we drop this down, put them all in between the buildings, and then we could do a screening along the backside of that, to hide it from the residential side viewpoint.
The only reason I brought this up, because you show it over here as asphalt, but you do not show it over here, okay, to be, I guess, correct, I should have shown the asphalt, if, if you can bring the roof back over here, too, this leads me to believe that, you know, you're just, this is just a vertical parapet right there, that starts, that's all I'm saying.
You got a couple more, a couple more comments, now, do you wanna do engineer, your comments?
The full engineering for the middle will need to be provided prior to issuance of engineering approval, the middle shall comply with CO 113705 for site plans, and CO 923 for erosion and sediment control, the applicant must admit stormwater calculations identifying the impacts of the proposed development on the existing stormwater facilities, stormwater quality and BNP's will be required for this development, the planning commission may wish to request a traffic impact study to satisfy any concerns to the local roadway network, conceptual approval is recommended.
Mr. Phil, do you have your...
Yes, just a, kind of a heads up, that all, of course, the construction plans will like to meet all the code requirements, ERS, yard hydrants, r- department access, whether or not you're gonna do any alarm sprinklers, and, being that you're gonna screen that north back wall, probably gonna need a, a roof ladder, 'cause the tower won't be able to drop over the parapet wall to get to the surface of the roof because of the standoff.
Apparently, right now, the code, what requires the kind of fire suppression, or fire alarm, but...
So those are, those are the, all the comments we've gotten, Brian or Mike, so this is, this is for conditional use permit, they would still have to come back for site plan as well?
I, I, yeah, I think what it sounds like, what I'm, I'm hearing, the use, if the commission agrees, is acceptable, but it, it makes some sense, maybe, to table the site plan portion, to work out some of these architectural details, have a chance to meet with the mayor's office, seems like that would be the, the best bet at this point, and that way you establish a use, and you can, the, the, the applicant then knows that that's acceptable, and can get into the details of the, the site plan, working with the administration.
At, at this point, what we were after, Tom is looking at acquiring the lot, but obviously, it's, for what he wants to do, it's a conditional use, you know, if, if he would purchase it, and you guys not accept it as being a conditional use, or being approved as that conditional use, then, the lot don't, the purchase don't do him any good, so, that's why we're, we're here to approve the conditional use.
There are, there's some other, there's some other issues that you probably should be aware of before you guys get too far in it, too, and then the mayor brought this to our attention, there's a development agreement for that old truck, where does it go, it's the old Sears building, all the way down, past Goddard?
All the way down, okay.
Okay, so there's a bunch of things, and, and there's some things in there that, you know, we're getting close to finishing up this development over thirty years, but, you know, as, getting towards the end, there's, there's some agreements, some things that they agreed to do, the, the landowner, that hasn't been met, some, some stipulations, I think, if you come, if you're willing to come back in and talk to the mayor, I'm sure he could probably point you in the direction of a lot, a lot of these issues, and, and let you know what's going, 'cause I think, these are some things that we need to get in line, at least need to be reviewed with, is it severs, like you said, or, or there's a conglomerate or group or something, before any, it goes too much farther, we don't want, I don't want you doing, agreeing...
What kind of examples are you giving?
Potential traffic signal was supposed to be installed at the main drive there.
Which drive?
It's between, it's, it's on one side, and then, the one on 82.
Right, that one is, out of the car stores.
Yeah, that one, other than, I'm sure there's, there's things still to be looked at with that, again, there were some conditions on that.
I would suggest, you, you should be afforded a copy of the original contract or agreement between the city and, and secret development at that time, which is, which is a document that was agreed to, before the planning, yeah.
But I think, I, I think probably could give you a conditional use, I think the use is okay, but again, maybe we'll have, you know, come back, when you come back for a second, before you do that, I would advise getting in and talking, talking to the mayor, if you guys are kind of okay with that approach.
Yeah, I think that's, sounds good.
What were your thoughts on the, I guess, you know, this'll really come back with the site plan, but your thoughts on parking with the potential restaurant, like, I don't know, if you had to redo the calculations and see what, if one of these became a restaurant, what would it do to you?
Well, the intent's not for that, for any, any of the three to become an eating establishment, I think we do, I think I come up with 32, or...
I got 50 on the...
And we showed 50, I have shown kind of the max that I could, now, whether one of those meets, if one could be, I don't know, I, I didn't look at it that way, because the intent's not for any of them to be an eating establishment, but I wanted to show max parking at this point, you know, on, on the site, so...
I don't think we wanna page into a corner at this point, or anything, but you may wanna look at that, like, yeah, what if one of them did, you do a calculation, is that 50, is 50 gonna cut it?
Yeah.
And then maybe there's a stipulation on our approval that says only one could be a restaurant, or maybe none could be, or maybe it's a informal agreement, I'm not sure.
That was one for, one for 100?
It's one for 50, I think I ran the, the, unit one is 1,965 square feet roughly, I, I ran that at the 1 to 15, and I think it was like 38 spaces just for unit one.
Yeah.
It's a, it's definitely a high standard to achieve for a small lot, so that's definitely something you need to, to look at.
Full of the row, or something like that, it looks like you got, like, one of the end unit, the far east, like, potentially have like a drive-through, you know, which could be, I'm guessing, bank, could be a lot of things, I'm assuming that's why I was looking at, like, that's a good idea.
And I don't know, is eating establishments separate than takeout, I know some towns have that, different ratios, but, again, the intent's not for any of them to be an eating establishment, but at the same time, I don't think you wanna be tied, tied down, you know, somebody comes and wants the...
And, and you can reduce your parking standard by 20% in the code for unusable areas, so that's something, when you really drill down at that, that parking, you employ that to, to help with, 'cause as it stands, it's, it's fairly parked on this property for a small piece, and, and so you're really, it's a lot of, a lot of asphalt and hard surface, so, I don't think you're gonna be able to get any more, so it's really taking a look at your business mix of what you're looking at, and how can you achieve... So, it's really taking a look at your business mix of what you're looking at and how can you achieve, how can you achieve the parking standard?
But that'll, you know, I guess, keep that in mind for the estimate. If you're okay with that, and somebody else has any other questions.
I just have a quick one, is there a, if there is a property owners association for this whole area, did you have to deal with them, with all of them, or is there one?
There is.
Do they have any, or do they have rules or something that you?
I have, I have worked on it, sure.
You do, okay. So, you're, you're confident, I, I see maybe, who's the head of it, is Gerald Seaver the head of?
I'd have to refer to my information to, tell you who's the head of it, I don't know.
Yeah, but they, they don't have any other problems, other?
None of them brought to my attention.
I'm just curious. That's my question. Okay. I'll save all questions and then take a motion.
Make a motion that the conditional zoning be approved. And the plans be resubmitted. Thing that we discussed here tonight.
I'd second that motion. Motion second. On favor?
Aye.
Against? All right. If you ask.
Next is the post signage for long-tail nits at ninety-three, Valley Road.
Give us a second here to organize.
Oh, we have, I looked at the picture of the rest.
For our new members, will it, will it pass something?
Sign the plan, just to kinda make it official, so usually, you know, pass it to me, just, you have to sign it anywhere down there.
I would definitely agree with that, based on how we're seeing.
You just pass it down.
You mentioned it here, but, but we've happened in some other areas.
All right. Are you, Jim?
I, all right, you wanna tell us, tell us your different posts here? Uh, these are four plastic letters onto a PBC backboard board. And that'll be a small fascia directly in front of the unit.
It is.
The entrance is to the unit in the hall, the corridor. So, this is able to decide if the unit faces to the front. Frontage is only eighteen feet. It's fourteen square foot sign, approximately twelve feet above grade. It's externally aligned, above that fascia, there's a, 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 or something, it's a light down. And this complies with the sign program that's in place there. Sign program does call out for a font of letters that are no longer available, but this matches what's permitted.
Yeah. Do you wanna summarize here or read it?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, yeah, pretty, pretty brief, just what the applicant said, fourteen point three-three square foot wall sign, individual black letters. No issue there, the code allows for thirty square feet. I did note in here about the, maybe removing that backer, but I think it's the billing owner's preference to not do that and protect that fascia board. And that's not a problem, we've allowed those backers elsewhere, so that's not an issue.
If we didn't use a backer, each one of the letters would have to be pin-mounted in a hole.
Right, into the fascia.
So, there's less holes.
Yeah.
You're familiar with that, when somebody pulls it out?
Yeah, yeah, and that's no problem, and we've used it in other locations with the backer, so, and that's, again, if that's a property owner's preference, no, no problem. So, I'd, I'd recommend the sign be approved at this time.
Do you have any feelings, huh? I did look at this and look at what's, there are really only one sign there that doesn't match this exactly. I think someone did put one up that doesn't have the backer, or all the other, all the other units there are exactly like this. Good members, that made me have to come out with a building.
What is this?
It's a nits shop, they sell yarns, they have classes. So, it's, it's kinda neat, they work in schools and areas. Living for shame.
Any other comments? All right, we got a motion.
Some move we approve the application.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, those patio landscapers for self-appointed assisted living in minus six thirty-three value. Were they supposed to be here? Everybody here? Okay, well, if they're not here. It gives us the option of discussing it or just table it, or do we just leave it off the agenda?
Table it.
It's okay, just table it, so make a motion to table it. All right. On favor, table it? Aye.
They have submitted structural plans for interior renovations.
Yeah.
That have been approved, and it also included those patios.
Okay.
Just to make the commission aware of that.
So, we're. Everyone's look okay, or you guys?
We, we won't issue permits on anything exterior until it comes through.
They got two projects, they would get addition upon hold, and this was a separate project for interior.
Okay. Yeah. Can you, you might wanna table the, the original had Ambassador on it. Yeah. You might wanna table that tonight. Okay. Master soccer complex, they asked to pull up, we could table them, make it official. All right, on favor? Having two new people, I don't know if you guys know all the time, but maybe we'll get somebody to come there, maybe just a long overdue. Let's figure one on, get you guys up to speed. I think that's it. Did the two of you get the schedule of meetings? I know, Gina also sent those out to us or gave us the last meeting, that's your, you guys, you guys get a copy of that?
I'm not sure, that's.
Meetings are timed, I'm sure she can send you a copy.
Yeah, I'll email it to them.
When's the next meeting?
Um, February eighth.
It's usually the third Monday of the month, but the first couple Mondays are first of the month.
It's five thirty normally.
But as of right now, it'll be a public hearing. The soccer complex, if it comes up, will it be a public hearing? I don't, I think they satisfied the public hearing. Unless something's major changes, I think they're satisfied, and it'll just be a, a, a.
Devin, is it just the first two months that you're gonna come on, the second Monday?
I, I think so, it's just the first two, yeah.
And then it's the third Monday again?
Yes, yes, 'cause I couple holidays. Anything else, all right, this, our ten motion manager. Make motion to adjourn? Second? On favor? Aye. All right.